Order, please. Order, Mr. Manager. All right. Good evening, everyone. It's August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Welcome to our City Council regular meeting. Thank you all who have joined us this evening, council and staff. Welcome. I look forward to a productive meeting. We have quite a bit to cover this evening, so we will try to be thorough and make sure we get through all of it. Madam Clerk, by the looks, we have a quorum, but will you go ahead and call the roll?
Okay. I don't think that was me. Mayor Owens.
Present.
Councilmember District One, Ron Davis.
Present.
Councilmember District Two, Damian Ladapo.
Present.
Mayor Protim, Councilmember District Three, Keisha Jeffcoat.
Present.
And Councilmember District Four, Patricia Alk.
Present.
Councilmember District Six, Deborah Herndon.
Present.
Thank you.
Please note that Councilwoman Ferguson is not here this evening. She's traveling, but we've been in discussion with him. With that being said, let's move right along, council. Mr. Manager, would you mind giving us an invocation, please, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. If you are willing to join us, we pray, please do. Heavenly Father, we pause, recognize your omnipresence, your domain and rule over all heaven and earth, and we stop and ask you to guide us in this meeting as we lead your people, the citizens of Mableton. We ask that you give our council wisdom. You give them temperance. You give them discernment as they make decisions tonight. We also ask for your protection for all of our citizens that travel to this meeting as they travel back home. We ask for your grace and your peace upon all of our city operations. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, if you can and are willing, please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Council, you've been provided a copy of the agenda prior to the meeting, and everyone should have a paper copy right now. At this point in time, I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Okay.
Thank you. Motion's been made and properly seconded in discussion, council. Here, none, I'll go ahead and I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval of the agenda as written, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. There is no opposition. The ayes have it. We will proceed forward, Madam Clerk, with the agenda for today. I don't think it has any, so it should be the same as it's in Civic Plus as we have here. We'll follow along. If something is different, please just let me know. Thank you, ma'am. So the first item that we have, what we're going to go into is public hearings. We do have several public hearings this evening, which will go over some amendments for some properties here in the city of Mableton. We have several cases as well as some second reads for a couple of ordinances. With that being said, Director Hughes, you may address the podium, sir, and if you don't mind, as we just go through these, because we will do public hearings, so you just kind of, you operate that area over there, and I'll take it from here.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and City Manager Tanks. The first item is Item A. This is OZI twenty twenty-five zero zero one. This is to consider amending the stipulations as they relate to other business, Item twenty-eight of twenty-twenty-three. This is for property at ten twenty-five Veterans Memorial Highway. Just to give you a little bit, this is the Providence Shopping Center with Publix in it. This evening, I have asked Chris Wheeler, our planning zoning manager, to provide a brief overview of this and then share the recommendation from the planning commission.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Wheeler.
Good evening, sir. As the director stated, this applicant is seeking to amend stipulations related to a zoning case that was previously heard by Cobb County Board of Commissioners. That is OB twenty-eight from two thousand and three. Previously, the applicant applied for a business license for the city of Mableton. Upon review, the applicant was notified that there are certain stipulations that prohibit from operating a beverage stores at this location. One of the stipulations is that for him to operate a beverage store at this location, he has to come before the Board of Commissioners, but now the City Council. There were six stipulations related to previously located on the property. The first stipulation prohibits any liquor store from being there, specifically from the previous applicant. So again, that previous applicant was Matthew Bowman, Jr., and so when the Board of Commissioners approved his request to have a liquor store there, he was the only one allowed to be at that location. Any future tenants will have to come back before the Board of Commissioners or the City Council for them to consider to removing the zoning stipulation that only one liquor store could be there. Right now, Mr. Bowman is no longer there, and the current applicant before you this evening is seeking to operate a liquor store at this location. Staff did review the applicant's request. Staff did recommend approval of the request as staff believes that the request is identical to the same request previously approved by Cobb County at a vote of five to zero. Staff did recommend that if you do approve his amendment stipulations, that you include all six previous stipulations from the Cobb County Board of Commissioners. Therefore, if the applicant happens to no longer work or operate this location, anybody else who wants to open another liquor store at this location has to come back before the City Council for the exact same thing. And applicant is here for the public hearing.
Thank you for that, Mr. Wheeler. So two key things I heard there is this is, there was an existing store there previously. And so what we are, what we're being asked is that we take this all with the same stipulations as were before, and if by chance this particular business is no longer there, it would have to come back and forth in front of the council.
Yes, sir. Where I'm asking you for, well, I'm recommending that if you do approve it, do the exact same stipulations that the Cobb County Board of Commissioners stated. There's only one liquor store to be available at that location, and that applicant only is the only one allowed to. So if he did want to sell it to whomever, that applicant would be forced to come back to the City Council for the same consideration.
Okay. Were there any additional stipulations that staff had?
No, sir. Those are only six conditions stated in the, from the minutes from the Board of Commissioners meeting from June twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, sir. Count, staff, council, any other questions? No other questions? If no other questions, we are going to have a public hearing related to this matter. Public hearings, Madam Clerk, I think we'll go as we normally do. Ten minutes for the applicant in support, and then ten minutes for the opposition. With that being said, I do believe the applicant was here. I'd like to go ahead and start with the applicant, if you don't mind. And I, as a point of clarity, I do want to go ahead and officially open the public hearing at this point in time. So the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Faleek. I am here to ask approval for a liquor store at ten twenty-five Veterans Memorial Highway. It's in a public shopping center, Unit three one zero, which is right beside Publix. Just a little bit about myself first. I am a husband and father of three children. They are all under four years old. I'm originally from East Africa, and I've been in Georgia since I'm fourteen. And I've been living in Georgia for the past thirty-one years. Graduated from Georgia State University. My family and I currently live in Midtown. But with three young kids, we are planning to purchase a home in Mableton close to the work. Now moving on to my business life, I have owned a liquor store in Mableton for the past fifteen years. It's called Plaza Liquor. It's in Mableton Parkway. And now I'm here to ask you for a second location at ten twenty-five Veterans Memorial, which was the same site where prohibition liquor store was approved in twenty twenty-three and operated as a liquor store until the, in the twenty twenty-four. The new store will be named Plaza Liquor two point oh, and it will be an upscale store. Even my lease requires it to be upscale. So in order to achieve this upscale quality, my initial investment in Plaza Liquor two point oh will exceed over a hundred thousand. And those investments include a sixteen-door cooler with a beer cave costing over sixty thousand. I'm not sure who have some of the, it will show some of the expenses that I'm going to be facing. I'm going to have a high-quality shelf thing, cashier area, cameras, and a point-of-sale system, and a new signage. And that's just, and after that, I will, I'm planning to add an additional two hundred fifty thousand dollar in inventory just the first year, and it should grow every year. Now I want to discuss the positive impact Plaza Liquor will have on the local economy. I have provided on a letter from our, from my CPA detailing the tax that I contributed from the Plaza Liquor that I already own. And yeah, it shows how much I contribute every year, and I plan that Plaza Liquor will generate equal, if not greater, tax revenue and licensing fee, which will provide direct benefit to our government and community. Besides tax contribution, another great economic impact will be Plaza Liquor, the one, the original Plaza Liquor in twenty twenty-three had purchased over one point eight million in goods just from local vendors, local vendors like RNDC, Republic National, which is located on Mableton Parkway. This spending creates a steady job for a lot of people, like delivery drivers, warehouse workers, salespeople. And we get ten to twelve weekly deliveries every week. And if I'm able to open Plaza Liquor two point oh, I'm expecting the same will happen. And my next topic is about job creation. I'm planning to hire four to five employees from the community, just like I have on my previous store. And I want to create a competitive pay and a family-like environment. I like to, I try to treat my employees like family. My current team members have been with me for three, six, and nine years, and I support my employees in many ways. If there's any emergency, they always come to me. If they need a loan for a car, I do give them a loan for a car, no interest. And yeah, even when one of my employee had her last child, I gave her a six-week paid maternity leave. She's actually here, Ebony Coleman. And yeah. Also, Plaza Liquor two point oh will also add value to the shopping center, to the new shopping center, because it will offer a one-stop experience. For example, on a Sunday football game, people can grab wings from next door or pizza, and then they can grab their bourbon or tequila from my location, making it a one trip. My current store averages three hundred people a day on weekdays and over five hundred people on weekends. And I expect the same for Plaza Liquor two point oh, which will be a benefit for neighboring businesses. And finally, I want to highlight a critical point. This exact location was granted zoning approval for liquor sales in twenty twenty-three. No zoning laws have been changed ever since, after that. And I've never been cited of any violation during my past fifteen years in the liquor business. And given this prior approval and my perfect history in abiding the rules, I respectfully ask you to approve me for this new location. And yeah, thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer if, any question, if any.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any initial questions? If anyone would like to speak in favor of this matter, OZI twenty twenty-five zero zero one, have the opportunity to make your way to the podium at this point in time. Seeing none, we'll switch to the second part of this. If there's anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this zoning case, please make your way to the podium at this point in time. Seeing none, last call. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you go ahead and close this public hearing? Counsel, at this point in time, you've heard from our staff with the recommendation as well as from the applicant, and you have the relevant information that's been given to you.
Yes, sir. I also wanted to clarify one thing. This is just for the use only. The applicant, if you do choose to approve, he still has to apply for alcohol license with the city. So he still has to go through all the stringent reviews process for all that. This is just for the use itself for him to apply.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler, for that bit of information. Counsel, any other questions for Mr. Wheeler or Director Hughes?
Mr. Wheeler, I see this as a consideration to amend the stipulations. Are we voting to amend the stipulations, or are we maintaining the same stipulations that was placed upon this location by Cobb County?
Yeah, you're agreeing to amend the stipulations same way as Cobb County did it. So again, you are, again, staff recommendation is to, if you are going to approve it, approve it for this applicant and this applicant only, that there's not another liquor store to be available, should not be able to be at that location unless they come before the City Council. So I would recommend to do, use the exact same conditions from Cobb County as, that is staff's official recommendation.
Any other questions? If not, I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion that we consider approving the amended stipulations regarding this application for OZI dash two zero two five dash zero zero one.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application with the six stipulations that staff recommended.
I second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. Any discussion, council? There are no questions, I'll go ahead and call the question after no discussion. All those in favor of approval of the motion made by Councilwoman Alk, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. There is no opposition. The ayes have it. Thank you. Let's move forward to Item six B. Director Hughes.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is very, it's case twenty twenty-five dash zero one. This is a request by Mr. Jeff Curlegrand. This is a request to reduce the seventy-five-foot lot frontage requirement to sixty feet in order to support a lot reduction or lot split for approximately one point one parcel of land. Chris Wheeler is here to provide the brief background on this request.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. In the city of Mableton's zoning code, any reduction of lot with overall lot size and lot frontage requires City Council approval. So it would go through the Board of Zoning Appeals for, at first, as a variance. If the Board of Zoning Appeals recommends approval, then it proceeds to go in front of the City Council. So before you this evening is recommend approval of a lot, a lot frontage reduction for Mr. Jeff to reduce his overall minimum requirement to do a lot split. Mr., the applicant is seeking to split his lot to build an adjacent house for his parents. So he meets all the development standards for our twenty. However, his lot frontage is a total of a hundred and twenty feet, so therefore, he's asking to reduce from the required seventy-five feet to sixty feet to be able to split the lot and, I'm sorry, to be able to apply for a lot split application with the city and as well as approval from Cobb County Water and Sewer and Stormwater Department. Oh, and the applicant is not here. I was notified he cannot make it tonight.
Okay. And this does have the staff recommended approvals for the variance as well as the VZA?
Yes, sir. They recommend it as requested to reduce the minimum lot frontage from seventy-five feet to sixty feet.
Thank you. Staff, any initial questions for Mr. Wheeler about this?
Do we have a plan? I don't recall seeing it in our packet. Do we have a plan in terms of what, you know, how it looks on the lot and how it's situated?
I believe you should have, ma'am. I apologize. It should be, this is a rough drawing that the applicant provided. It should be in your packet.
Okay.
But the estimated draw, again, is just going straight back again with the sixty feet of lot frontage to split. The applicant has intended to use, have a shared driveway between him and his relatives, which the shared driveway is permitted, but simply he's just looking to split the lot to kind of go over, the lot is not part of a platted subdivision. The lot is bigger than the other lots within the immediate area. Therefore, staff was in the mind of recommending approval for this, and the board agreed as well. But also, again, this is just for, allow him to attempt to apply for a lot split. He still has to get his approvals from Cobb County Water and Sewer and the Stormwater Department. So this is just, again, allow him to submit for consideration. So even if you do approve it, and he still doesn't meet all the requirements regarding Cobb Water, Water and Sewer, Stormwater, as well as the public, Cobb County, Cobb County and Douglas Public Health, it will be mute. But this is just part of the process to get him to that point.
So looking at the plan, it seems as though he's trying to bring the property forward closer to street? Is that what?
Yes, ma'am. So he has a hundred and twenty feet worth of frontage, and so he's just looking to do sixty, in which, again, he has, as stated, again, that's just a kind of a concept drawing. Once he gets approval, then he'll have more of an engineering drawing to lay out exactly how everything will be built out.
Okay. And the frontage should be seventy-five feet, is that?
Yes, ma'am. The frontage should be seventy-five feet per our development standards.
Did staff make any indication in terms of how it will impact anything with that move?
No, ma'am, sorry. This is a single-family home, built in like another single-family home. The use is similar to other surrounding uses. This is just a single-family lot itself. It'd been different if it would have been a subdivision of four more, then staff would have more of an in-depth look. Because it's just a single-family lot and allowed by right, the next, the impact would be noticeable as any other ones that would be built by right that comes into our office. But I do want to kind of emphasize, Cobb County Water and Sewer and the Stormwater are very stringent when it comes to lot splits. So it's just not as simple as just stamping, stamping a rubber stamp approval of this. The applicant will have to provide very detailed drawings of how he plans on developing the lot as well as far as the driveway as well for the Department of Transportation, too.
Thank you. At this point in time, I would like to go ahead and open our public hearing related to this matter. If you'd like to speak on behalf of this, please make your way to the podium now. Seeing none, I will ask at this point in time of the public hearing if anyone would like to speak in opposition of this case, please make your way to the podium now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing for Case V dash two zero two five dash zero one. And at this point in time, council, I would like to entertain a motion for the consideration to approve this specific case for Jeff Curlegrand.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Case number V dash twenty twenty-five dash zero one. Jeff Curlegrand, Tax Parcel, eighteen oh one sixty-one, zero 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 two zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a second?
I second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion, council? There are no other discussion, or call the question. All those in favor of approving Case V dash two zero two five dash zero one, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And no opposition, the ayes have it. Please note, Madam Clerk. And with that, Director, we're going to move to 6C.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a second reading, consideration of an ordinance creating Chapter 5, alcoholic beverages and for other lawful purposes. Ms. Lamaya Edmonds, our business license supervisor is here to provide the background. At the conclusion of the public hearing, you'll have the opportunity to vote as it relates to moving forward, rather to adopt this and move forward on that. With that, let me ask, Lamaya, come up to present just the brief background on this.
Indeed, thank you. Good evening, Ms. Edmonds.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. As Director Hughes mentioned, this is the second reading of our Chapter 5, adoption of our alcoholic beverage ordinance. This document is pretty similar to the document that you saw at first reading, there were some minor changes to that, not many that would necessarily affect the intent of the document that we presented before.
When you say that, you mean just, I mean clerical-type changes or?
Yeah, they're just pretty much cleanup. There was some additions that were made that clarified the structure of the License Review Board. There were some changes or additions that added to the authority of the city council to allow events, city-sponsored events and alcohol that is served at those events.
Can you clarify, Ms. Edmonds, the changes made to the License Review Board's structure?
Yes, ma'am. So that originally was presented to you with, I believe, 10 members, and it has been changed to seven members appointed by the city council and the mayor.
Okay, thanks. There were also some edits that was brought up by, I think it was the mayor on Monday for the work session, was that, did we make those changes?
Yes, it has.
Okay.
I just wanted to be clear as to the stipulations that were put in place for alcohol use, particularly for events and for outside. The question that, are you finished, Councilwoman Ock? Any other questions? Okay. At this point in time, I've asked this before, but I just want to make sure for clarity, to be able to move this forward, will there be any need for staff modifications?
No, not at this time. There has not been any indication that we would need any changes in staff. We will be fully staffed by the time that, by the end of the year, we need start break renewals, but those positions were already in place and we'll be filling those.
Wonderful, thank you. Counsel, any other questions?
Do you have a question for us?
Yes, ma'am.
Assuming that the board composition was reduced from 10 to seven to align with our charter, I noticed that there wasn't any kind of residency, like link, like in our charter as far as boards' composition, there's like a one-year residency requirement. Is that going to be a problem or in conflict with our charter with it not being on this board? So can you repeat that? That's a lot of words.
And if someone moves outside of their district after a year?
So in our charter, I think it mentions on the composition of like boards, it's like must be a resident of one year, right? But it's not specified in this particular ordinance, is that something that should be there, or?
So let me, give me one second, let me, because I actually had that subsection pulled up. Because I didn't remember the one-year requirement, but I do remember the requirement that they live within your district, so I just want to make sure before I tell you that it's not one year, that that's actually correct.
While we're waiting, can we also explain like why it went from 10 to 7?
So the intent the entire time was seven. It was just a year, year charter. So it was never an intent to have 10 people, it's always an intent for the mayor and each council member to appoint someone. So I don't see the, I don't see anything about the year requirement, but I do see the residency requirement for your district. It says, members appointed by the mayor may reside anywhere within the corporate limits of the city, but a member appointed by a council member shall reside within the district of the council member who appointed such member. And that is consistent, I think, with how we have it written. But to the extent there was any requirement that's within the charter, whether it's repeated within your code or not, they would still have to adhere to whatever.
So if it is in the charter, and someone approached me and wanting to be on this alcohol review board, and they have not been a resident, they just moved here a couple months ago, that's a no-go?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I need.
Counsel, I've mentioned this before, since we're talking about the board and the composition of, I've taken a lot of time to look at different alcohol review boards from other cities across the state and how they generally function, not how they function, the composition of them and who serves on those boards. And oftentimes, they are members of the, or the business owners have been members of public safety in some way, shape or form, even police officers. So while there is no specific criteria listed here for those, I would urge the council to give specific notice and thought through those people that would be serving on this, because this is a very important board, as they all are, but this has some unique characteristics as well. So there can be further discussion about that over time as you start to look for candidates, but I would highly advise, take a look at other cities and see how appointments are made or who appointments are given to you, to as it relates to this board. With that being said, Ms. Lamaya, I don't know if there's any other questions related to this. Counsel, any other questions?
I just wanted to, I was trying to look it up in the charter, just wanted, can we just make, maybe make a note to double-check that there isn't a one-year residency, or have you already seen?
So actually, I don't know if you've heard me clicking, but I'm searching for the word one. It's in the charter 64 times.
It's one. No, that's not the right it. You have mine. Long section. It's, search for 12 months?
So if, but if we have that stipulation requirement in the charter, this does not supersede that?
I know, just to have consistency with the charter.
12, yeah, I don't see the word 12. I did search all the word ones, I didn't see it, but I'm searching 12 now, I don't see 12 come up at all. Now, I do know you have a one-term requirement for CID members. Do you think that may be what?
That's a separate, completely separate section.
Well, I mean, as far as what she was recalling about the one term.
Is that Section 311 of the charter you're referring to?
I think so. I don't have the charter fully memorized. I might be pulling it from something else that I remembered within the charter, it might have been with, it may not be germane to this discussion.
No, I do think it would be very germane, I just, but I still think the charter would overrule it, so as our attorney said, it would still have to go back to that even if it was different. I don't want to, I would like to find it out, but I want to make sure that we're clear that it doesn't, that our compositions for our cabs do not always have to exactly match the charter. Even going to 10 is expanding beyond the charter, which has seven.
Is that a factual statement?
I think so.
So you do have the ability, hold on, let me go back to Section 311. Yeah, so it says here, it says, "The city council shall by ordinance, shall create by ordinance such board commissions and authorities to fulfill any investigative, judicial, quasi-legislative function," and it says, "shall by ordinance establish the composition, period of existence, duties and powers thereof." So you do have some flexibility by ordinance to do the things that are prescribed within 311, particularly pertaining to composition, periods of existence, duties and powers thereof. What we have been doing, just in efforts to reach consensus, is basically just mirroring.
Correct, yes. I don't doubt that answering the question as to why it was moved to 10 to 7 is just to mirror the charter, but the charter clearly gives the ability for the council through an ordinance, which this is, to determine the composition of the board. I'm not arguing to change it by any means, I'm just saying that I don't want us to get, I don't want us to think that we cannot, that, that an ordinance that we're creating a board through cannot be different than what's specifically carved out as a default in the charter, that's all.
I don't have any further questions.
Okay, no more questions for Ms. Edmonds? Okay, thank you, ma'am. At this point in time, we'll go ahead and open our public hearing as it relates to this item. If you would like to speak on behalf of this ordinance for Chapter 5 of alcoholic beverages, please make your way to the podium at this time. If you'd like to speak against the approval of this alcoholic beverage ordinance, Chapter 5, please come to the podium at this point in time. Madam Clerk, seeing that we have no takers, I'm going to go ahead and officially close the public hearing at this point in time, since this is the actual second reading, counsel, we will be voting on this tonight, so therefore, at this point in time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the ordinance creating Chapter 5, alcoholic beverages and for other lawful purposes.
And make a motion to approve the ordinance creating Chapter 5, alcoholic beverages and for other lawful purposes.
Excellent.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded by Councilwoman Davis. Any further discussion, counsel? That being said, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of approval of the ordinance creating Chapter 5, alcoholic beverages and for other lawful purposes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. You're in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you, counsel. At this point in time, Director Hughes, we're going to move to item 6D.
Good evening again. This is a second reading of an ordinance updating Chapter 7, taxes, fees and assessments of the Code of Ordinances, regulation, taxation and business licensure and for lawful purposes of the Mableton Code of Ordinances. Ms. Lamaya Edmonds will present the brief background on this ordinance, and this is a second reading.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. As mentioned, this is our second reading. There have been some changes to this document as well. The most substantive changes would have been in our health spa section, that pretty much updates it to modernized language as industry standards have just gotten stricter on the regulatory operations of our health spas. So we've updated that to mirror what is typical practice right now. We've also added the section on insurance that allow us to collect on insurance premiums that are, that are taking place in the city, and a few other just cleanup and minor changes.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, any questions? If there's no questions on this, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing as it relates to this ordinance updating Chapter 7. If you'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance, please come to the podium at this point in If you would like to speak against this ordinance, please make your way to the podium this time. Madam Clerk, seeing that we're coming to the podium, I'm going to go ahead and officially close this public hearing, and counsel, since this is the second reading, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve this ordinance.
Motion to approve this. Ordinance is written.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Counselors, a motion pending to approve the ordinance updating Chapter 7 for taxes, fees, assessments of the Code of Ordinances, regulation, occupation, taxation and business licensure and for other lawful purposes. Any discussion?
Mayor, if.
Yes.
If we could, can we defer this, so I can confirm something with Lamaya? Defer the vote on this?
I am more than happy to, if it's necessary. You'd like, who made the amendment?
Maybe just put it at the very end, like after E, and then it'll take me about four to five minutes just to confirm one thing with her.
I'd like to make a motion to defer this item until after item E?
Until the very end of item 6.
Until the very end of item 6?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. All in favor of deferring this item until after item E in our agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Director Hughes, let's move straight on to 6E at this point in time, if you don't mind, sir.
Yes, sir. This is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance curating Article 5, subdivisions under Chapter 8, buildings and construction of the City of Mableton Code of Ordinances. This, as I indicated, is a second reading. The purpose of this ordinance is to outline the rules and processes for properties to be subdivided into multiple lots. This also includes maintenance periods for public roads and public infrastructure. It also includes the technical requirements for subdivision layout, including lot size, road dimensions, block size, road curves and addressing. The dedication language is also included to dedicate the public roads, public infrastructure to the city, and also a process for ensuring maintenance of detention ponds and the process for maintenance of private roads. That is the background as it relates to the ordinance. Mayor and counsel, we would respectfully request that you open the public hearing at this time, and at the conclusion of that, you may consider approving this decision.
Thank you for that. Counsel, any initial questions from Director Hughes related to this ordinance?
I'm sorry, were there any substantive changes, or is this exactly the same as the first?
I think the only change is Councilwoman Herndon, just some additional language. We wanted to make it clear that this ordinance were not accepting detention ponds. There's liabilities associated with that, and similar to a city to the west of us in their subdivision ordinance, they don't accept detention ponds, so we've decided not to do that as well. And then the ordinance just includes some additional language about the enforcement of private roads, making sure they meet requirements for public roads, and that the ordinance outlines a notification requirements regarding the issuance of violations, and if a private road fails, then the city can make repairs and then lean the property for those costs associated with those repairs.
Okay, so these sections were add, added?
They were, they were, they were in hand.
Expanded.
The language was improved, that's probably the best way to put it.
Director Hughes, Councilwoman Jeffcoat has a question?
Yes, sir.
So how does this impact SDS negotiations when it comes to retention, detention ponds and all that?
So I do know, I do know that, that City Attorney Amelia Ashby has reviewed this ordinance for, to ensure that the subdivision ordinance is complying with the SDF, SDS.
Does that have to be the wrong word?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that question.
This is all retention, detention ponds and ponds shall not be dedicated to the city, but shall be constructed and maintained by the owner or owners on whose property or properties the ponds exist, except as otherwise provided by the state or federal laws and regulations. And if Councilman Ferguson was here, he would not like that typo on page 15.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think it changes the substance of the nature of it, but I think that's part of that change there. that's part of that change there. Any other questions, council, for Director Hughes?
So do we have something in place to ensure that the owners who are responsible for maintaining these detention ponds will actually do it?
I can, yeah. So once this is in the ordinance, if we have a private owner that has a detention pond that's on their lot, in a sense, it has to be maintained at a certain level, even with so high grass or just overgrown stuff, then code enforcement can go in and cite and then make them bring it up to code. And what typically happens is a neighbor complains or someone complains that the detention pond is, they say it's got alligators in it, and they start saying it's got snakes and alligators in it, and then code enforcement goes out and finds out who the HOA or who the private property owners and says you need to get it cleaned up, per status. And if they don't, we can abate, do it ourselves and then do other things. So yes, there is a way to make sure that once it's owned by a private owner, that the city can make sure that they're kept up.
Okay, so but we don't have a process to inspect or to check, you know, once a year or anything like that? It's just we're going to have to wait until a complaint comes in?
We could have, our code enforcement could create a strategy where they go do what we call spot checks or checks on detention ponds. That can be easily, as an operational decision, if we get that concern, but yes, ma'am, that's still, that wouldn't be an issue, that's not, you don't need to have the dedicated staff. But let's say, yeah, most times it comes from a complaint, or we may just have somebody decide, the code enforcement director may decide he wants to pull plots, get with community development and see where our detention ponds are, and he may decide that he may want to go out and check a few and see how they're looking and take from there. It's actually pretty smart, I think it's pretty smart, well-written, the way to do this.
But outside of that, Cobb County will maintain the public detention, like what's the, can you talk a little bit more about that?
I will not talk about what Cobb County can do. I can't speak for Cobb County.
I can't, I can't speak for what Cobb County does either.
Okay, can we, can we say whether or not, are we managing detention ponds under our purview?
Right now, detention ponds are part of the stormwater system, which we have a one-year contract with the county, so they're currently responsible for them.
Thank you.
At this point in time, council, are you having any other questions? I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing. Thank you, at this point in time, the public hearing on this matter is open. If you'd like to speak on behalf of this ordinance, please make your way to the podium at this time. If you'd like to speak against this public hearing, I mean, it's part of the public hearing, if you'd like to speak against this ordinance, please make your way to the podium. Thank you, Ms. Wilson, you're recognized.
Okay. Denny Wilson, District 2. There's a difference between a detention pond and a retention pond. You know, the detention pond temporarily holds the water while the retention pond fills up with the water. It's unfair to pass this on to the homeowners, because many homeowners didn't have detention and retention ponds. And I'm just, I'm very, very upset to see you guys passing this on to the homeowners, because Cobb County is telling you that they're not going to make this a part of their deal, that the city is going to have to be responsible for the detention, retention ponds. Now you guys want to pass it on to the homeowners, and you know that there are serious infrastructure problems in this area. So you're adding additional costs, which can be, you know, anywhere fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars for homeowners to have to repair these retention, detention ponds, and that is not fair to us. I mean, I don't have one, but there's one at the end of my street, and I know how that thing fills up, and I see the rain when it fills up, and I see how the water is backed up into the street, and how people splash water whenever they come down there. So, I mean, you guys need to rethink this, because this is not something that you should be passing on to the homeowners. The homeowners didn't create it, and they should not be required to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Can I clarify?
Yes, please, ma'am.
Yeah, so the detention ponds that were being maintained by the county, they will continue to maintain those detention ponds. So this won't impact the obligation of the county to maintain. So if you have a detention pond and the county has been maintaining or they have that responsibility, one of the things that we negotiated during SDS was for the county to retain and keep that responsibility. So you should continue to see that, those maintenance and repairs.
Yeah, so which ones are we passing on to the homeowners?
This applies to new development.
So this would apply to new development, where the developer at that point would have the responsibility of organizing, because historically, there has, there has been a lack of organization. There's been developers who have come in, they have not safeguarded the community to create a mechanism for the payment of detention ponds, and then it gets out of whack. And then because of that, a lot of governments have agreed to go ahead and pay and maintain the detention pond. So some of your communities, the county did agree to maintain detention ponds, we have negotiated, the county has agreed by contract to continue to provide that maintenance for the life of the property, so that's, it's not going to stop in two years or five years. What we have in place now are procedures and policies that require that the developers set up and organize and set up those mechanisms. And that way, the detention pond for that community is paid for by that community versus being subsidized by other communities through county-wide, I mean, city-wide tax funding and other funding. For new developments.
Any others that would like to speak against this ordinance, please make your way to the podium at this point in time? See, no one else, Madam Clerk, I'm going to go ahead and officially close the public hearing on this matter. And council, again, this is a second reading, we're going to be voting on this tonight. So at this point in time, I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve ordinance creating Chapter 5, or Article 5, subdivisions under Chapter 8, Buildings and Construction of the City of Mableton Code of Ordinances.
I'd like to make a motion, as so written.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Aye, second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded by Councilman Davis. Any further discussion, council? Here now, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval of the ordinance creating Article 5, Subdivisions under Chapter 8, Buildings and Construction of the City of Mableton Code of Ordinances, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you, council.
Did you raise your hand, or are you a nay?
No, I'm, that was...
You did this.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was talking to myself at night.
Oh, okay. Okay, so some didn't raise your hand, so I'm assuming it's all yes.
So... Council, for clarity, if you did not vote in favor of this, please make note now by raising your hand.
I think there's a point of lack of clarity, so anyway, yeah. Because I just want to make sure that it's actually for new construction only, so, but I know you already opened the floor to questions, so it's probably too late, but I was trying to find it, where it's saying new construction, so.
I understand, at this point in time, there was, you did not vote in opposition?
No, I didn't vote in opposition.
Okay, thank you. Let the record state, the vote was 7-0, Madam Clerk. Or 6, sorry, my apologies. With that being said, Director, that is, concludes Section 6.
We're going back to item 10, sir?
Yes, we have to go back to what we've now call item F. Madam Attorney, did you get with Lamai, are you prepared, and you forward with this?
Yes, so this is going to be one of, one of those moments that I'm going to incentivize the council to get MuniCode, or Susan, to get MuniCode in place, because it would help staff to be able to easier, easier see what's been adopted previously. But we have already adopted Section 8 of this ordinance, so my request would be to approve this ordinance minus the elimination of, and let me make sure I give you the right article name, the very last article in the ordinance, approve minus the elimination of Article 8. Yes, 8.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Yeah, the request, the recommendation would be to approve this ordinance subject to elimination of Article 8.
And what is Article 8? What's an Article 8?
Article 8 is, if you go to page, which, what the content, what is it, the substance? It is subsection on insurers. It is page 82.
Eighty, okay. And why are we excluding that?
Because we've already completed this process. I don't know if you recall, but back in 2024, we went back and forth with the Insurance Commissioner's Office, and part of the process of adopting an insurance premium ordinance is that you adopt it, you give it to the Insurance Premium Commissioner, they review it, vet it, tell you whether it's accepted or not. We actually already went through that process, and it is accepted, and you're in alignment now to get that funding for this year, and the staff just wasn't fully aware of that. So they tucked that section in there, and I noticed that when I just reread through it while it was being up for discussion, so obviously you don't want to mess with the insurance premiums.
We had several meetings about that last year.
Yes, multiple meetings and multiple back and forth with the state, but they did in writing confirm that they fully vetted and accepted your insurance premium ordinance, so we do have that in place. But that, like I said, when you have MuniCode in place, it will be tremendously easier for, you know, the staff to be able to see what the prior adoption history is.
And that's in process.
Does she amend her motion? I think it was emotional for her. Will she amend, or do we make a... Want to amend your motion?
I'd like to make a...
Amendment.
Amendment?
I'd like to amend the motion that's currently in place with the elimination of Article 8.
A second, or the ordinance that's currently in.
The ordinance that it's currently in.
In place, yeah, in place.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councilman O'Wodper. At this point in time, any further discussion, council? Here now, I'll call the question. All those in favor of motion made by Councilwoman Jeffcoat, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, thank you. That does conclude Section 6 now, Director Hughes. Thank you, sir. Council, we're going to move right along, the next section is Item 7, which are presentations, acknowledgements. We do have Ms. Jo Layman here, to, Ms. Jo Layman here from the South Cobb Library, who will be providing an update for us about what's going on at the South Cobb Regional Library.
Good evening, everyone, City Manager, Mayor, Council. My name is Jo Layman, and I'm regional.
Do you have a presentation, Ms. Layman? I think I want you to take the...
Oh, okay. I'll let you control it? No, I can't. Which one is it? The top button? All right, go ahead and do your introduction. Am I doing that right? Isn't that all? No. Go ahead. I'm Jo Layman, Regional Manager for the South Cobb Region of the Cobb County Public Libraries.
Hello, and my name's Nikisha MacNeil, I'm one of the adult services librarians at South Cobb. So this summer, we had a very busy summer, we had our mini golf fundraiser, as well as our annual summer reading program. The theme this year was Color Our World.
And our summer kickoff party was June 3, and over 1,500 people attended the kickoff party, had a good time, and you see our illustrious leader, the library director Keith Sherman there, he had more fun than anybody at the party. So here are some statistics for our summer reading, and as you can see, the total reported reading minutes for the South Cobb Region was 499,117 minutes. Now this does not mean that's all the minutes that everybody read, but these are all the minutes that were recorded, and this is the statistics that we will send into the state. Now, the summer reading is through Georgia Public Library Service, and it's partially assisted funds through the Library Services and Technology Act through the Institute of Museum and Library Services. So we're asking everyone to please help us continue to offer programs like summer reading by answering the following questions for MIMLS, and the survey is on the website, or you can go to your local library and get a QR code and fill out the survey. That will help us keep getting money.
We also continued our annual summer food service program, Happy Helpings. It was set up at three libraries, North Cobb Regional, South Cobb Regional, and Gritters Library. In June alone, South Cobb served 142 breakfasts and 296 lunches. We also continued our partnership with Vision to Learn, they're a mobile vision clinic. Since 2018, we have provided over 3,000 eye exams. This summer, we provided over 400 eye exams, and about 300 children were given free glasses.
Don't they look nice in their new glasses? So how does, how would a student know that they need glasses? Well, they don't, that's why this program is so important for them to have the test and get glasses if they need them. So we're still partnering, continuing with the Cobb County Schools, Marietta City Schools, and the Georgia Cyber Academy to provide pass accounts for every student in Cobb County. And with those pass accounts, it eliminates the barrier of a parent having to come into the library and get them a library card. They can use their student number to check out books and use the computers. And Library Pass also promotes lifelong learning, and it stands for public access for student success, because when our students succeed, we succeed. We also continue with our program for educator cards, and these are special cards for educators, anybody who teaches in the Cobb County system, can get a library card, it doesn't matter what county they live in, and this allows them to check out books and materials for classroom use. Well, this year, the fall book sale has been canceled because of storage issues, but we continue to expand it to the in-house book sale. So we've reduced the prices to the same prices that you would get at our larger book sales, and this allows patrons to shop at their local library in a more intimate setting. So the library hopes to resume the large book sale in spring 2026. Administration received an update regarding the South Cobb Capital Project Fund. The last time I came before you, I said that legislature zeroed out the project for South Cobb. Well, our... Well, our three million dollar commitment from the county has been included in FY26 capital budget, not as part of SPOLOSS that was previously allocated. Henceforth, it is our understanding that upon approval of the FY26 budget, including this capital portion, we will meet our previously targeted budget of four million three hundred thirty-three thousand dollars comprised of prior SPOLOSS allocations of seven hundred thirty-three thousand, our District Four Commissioner Monique Sheffield's five hundred thousand discretionary commitment, and this three million dollars brings us to our commitment for the South Cobb Library Expansion. And although we have the funds now, the date for the project to start is still to be arranged.
So what's happening at the library? So this Friday for the kiddos, we are having the Brooks and Branch Puppet Show presented by Cobb County Water System. In September, we will have the Unsong Heroes Presentation and the Beavs and Bonding Program in September. This month, we will continue with our Belly Dance Class. In September, the American Red Cross will be hosting a blood drive. So go to their website to sign up. In October, we will be hosting a suicide prevention program for parents as well as the Monarch Butterfly Program presented by the Cobb County Water System. In November, we will be hosting an Indie Author Book Fair. So if you're an author or know any authors, the deadline to sign up is October fifteenth. We also have an ongoing hygiene donation drive for our patron-powered care cabinets where we give items to unhoused and underserved individuals. So if you want to make a donation, please drop it off. And lastly, we are here, we are here to perform outreach, come to community engagement, provide access to resources and education. So support your local library. You might as well come, you've already paid for it.
And we'd like for you to attend our programs. And you can also support your local library through the Library Foundation. You can go online and there's a QR code for you to make donations. And we also accept volunteers at the library. So if you're interested in volunteering, stop by your local branch or just go online and complete the application.
Are there any questions or comments? Yes, sir. Not at the moment. It's mostly been in the Cobb County Schools as of yet, but we haven't banned anything yet. Ms. Joe, do you want to add anything?
No, we are not banning books as of yet. Now, if there is a book that a parent may complain about or want us to reconsider, we may reconsider moving it from one section to another. But no, we are not there yet to ban books.
Anyone else? Thank you for your.
Thank you, Ms. Lehman.
Thank you, ladies.
If you have not visited our local South Cobb Regional Library, as I call it, the Mabelton Library, take an opportunity to go by. Some good stuff happening there. All right, Counsel, we're going to move on forward now to Item Eight, which is our appointments. We do have one appointment this evening, it's a nomination for our inaugural Human Resources Director. As you guys know, we have not had a Human Resources Director yet at this time. We've had consultants, we've had consulting organizations, we've had HR specialists and HR manager, but we have yet to have a HR Director. Being this is a director role, we did take a nationwide search. When I say nationwide, I mean a nationwide from right here in Mabelton all the way to Oregon, I think we were looking at candidates. I am beyond pleased that we have reached a point where I'm able to make an official nomination this evening. There's three things that when we're speaking about this nominee is someone that is strategic, someone that's impact-driven, and that is people first. I will have her come up, but I want to make sure that I do justice to this a bit. With over twenty years of Human Resources leadership across municipal government, finance, and healthcare, our hope-to-be HR Director specializes in aligning people strategies with organizational goals that drive engagement, inclusion, and operational excellence. She currently serves as a Director of HR and Civil Service for the City of Hamilton, Ohio. She currently is moving forward with multiple transformative initiatives that, and that city has shaped culture, improved retention, and enhanced employee experience across the city. I'm going to fall short of reading through her entire bio, but let me tell you, it is impressive. She has impressed every single person she's had opportunity to meet. I will say that she came out number one in the technical panel, which is not an easy feat, the way our City Manager puts together those panels. And she was far and away our number one pick when we had some culture and fit discussions. I had the opportunity to meet her a second time when she flew down specifically to talk about the city of Mabelton and get a better understanding because we want to make sure that in the City of Mabelton with our directors and our appointed officers, that it's truly a win-win, right? It's an opportunity for us to put our best foot forward, but also an opportunity for our directors and appointed leaders in the city to have an impact in a way of shaping and growing our culture. So with that said, Counsel, you've had an opportunity to receive some information and be a part of the actual interviews or the culture and fit discussions. At this point in time, what I want to do is go ahead and formally make my nomination for Ms. Pope of Ohio to be our inaugural HR Director. And I know that comes at the recommendation of our City Manager. Again, far and above, she's really shown herself, I think thus far, to be worthy of the role. I'm excited to hopefully be able to add her and have her on board with our other directors to help lead this city. With that being said, Counsel, that is my nomination. At this point in time, I would ask if there's any specific questions before I call the question on this nomination. Mr. Manager, do you have any remarks or comments?
Yeah, I would say, Mayor, just ditto to what you've spoken. I had a chance to meet Ms. Pope during the process. As you stated, our process includes a technical panel, a technical panel of subject matter experts in the area of HR. Ms. Pope performed extremely well under technical panel. Then she moved on to a second panel, which typically is looking at not her technical skills, but her cultural fit and alignment with the Mabelton culture. She did very well there. And of course, she got a chance to talk with you and a few other council members. And all my interactions with her have shown her to be very optimistic, friendly, but very technically sound. I smile when I say optimistic because she has that, she's going to fix the city overnight and it just makes me smile. So without further so, just think we got a very great candidate, a good nominee in this Pope.
Thank you. When I asked her specifically, said that her leadership was grounded in compliance, ethics, and a commitment to inclusive practices. And we know we put that first and foremost here in the city. We've been fortunate enough to be designated by GMA as a city of ethics and a city of civility. So I'm sure she will help us move further with that. With that, Counsel, I will go ahead and call the question on my nomination for Ms. Pope to be our inaugural HR Director. At this point in time, if, with this vote, all those in favor of nominating Ms. Pope as our inaugural HR or as it says here, Human Resource Director, please say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to nominate. Do we need to?
No.
Yeah, if you're taking a vote, you should have a motion.
But we're fine to have a motion. Go ahead. To accept my nomination. Yeah, go ahead.
I second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded on the nomination. So at this point in time, the nomination has been accepted. And when we forward for the vote on the nomination, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Congratulations, Ms. Pope. You are now our official HR inaugural Director. If you would please, ma'am, take the podium. Floor is yours. And officially, welcome to Mabelton.
Thank you so much, Mayor Owens, City Manager Tanks, esteemed and distinguished council members. Do appreciate not only the nomination, but the acceptance of myself as the inaugural HR Director. I am humbled and excited at the opportunity to assist in the visionary prospects of Mabelton. There is untapped talent. There is a wealth of resources here, and I am looking forward to getting my hands and being in the thick of it, in the middle of it. I am looking forward to meeting the needs of the community and becoming a part of the community. And again, I say thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if she did bring some guests with her, I think it'd be nice to recognize.
At least one of the two they're acknowledged, recognized.
I am always happy and proud to have my amazing husband, Daryl Pope, by my side. He is my supporter. He does put up with all the shenanigans, thank you, sir. And then I have two dearest friends, they were really family, Yvette and A.J. Johnson. They have come all the way from Tyrone and I do appreciate and love you all. If you would just stand up. There is a lot of love and support here. And again, I am grateful, humbled, and of thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, lastly, another round of applause, please. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pope. We're happy to have you on board. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, we're going to move forward now with Item Nine, which is our public comment. You have public comment cards for this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I have a lot of activity today. I have seven cards up here. And the first person to speak, and just a reminder, it's a two-minute time limit. And the mayor and council do not answer questions back and forth. It's just public comment only because this is a business meeting. They need to vote on the business items of the city. So just remember that. And the first one to speak is Monique Lester. And after Monique is Angela Nguyen. So Angela can be ready to come up after Monique.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor Owens, Council.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'm here. I signed up and said that I was here based on the housing crisis that I am experiencing. I know I don't have the two minutes and she said that, you know, you all can't answer back. That's fine. But somebody's got to answer. You might not answer today, but somebody's going to answer. I stand Silver Creek Crossing, which is a ghost town now. You all know mostly what's been going on there. I just haven't been happy with the results of the community. How it's run. I talked to Lisa Cupid on Sunday and she said that you all said that you all had it and that her hands were tied. She couldn't do anything else. When I started this journey, I started with Lisa Cupid. And she made a lot of promises and talked very well about the community. And now that she's saying, oh, I can't do anything else, I'm very, very, very not happy because I heard her say that she did a lot before that and for the community and the people that's still there in that community. So in saying that, that's my point tonight. I was, I didn't know that you all took it over and that basically, I know it's the city of Mabelton, but it was in Cobb County hands. When you all took it over, I wish you all would have worked with the council there so that it would have been a better results than right now what it is, which I know you all are just starting out and it's a lot to go on. But since they already had it, I think it would have been a good idea to work with the city council, who knew what was going on when this all started. So to come here and I know I don't have the two minutes, but I just really, really, really would like to hear from you all about how you all are going to do it now, since you all don't want to work with the chairperson who's been there and knows what's been going on in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen.
Okay, after Ms. Nguyen is Michelle Bradley, I believe is the handwriting. Right now, Angela Nguyen.
Good evening, Mayor Owens and everyone else on the clergy. My name is Angela Nguyen. I'm in District Number Two. I just got to say this, I've been bamboozled out of thousands of dollars and I'm still homeless. It's seven months now. And I just, I have to say, I just don't know what to do now. Been looking for a place and credit is everything these days, but I know God is able to steal. He's still on the thrones and I know he gonna see me through. I don't look what, I don't look like what I've been through because I have learned to lean and pin on him more because really ain't nobody out there to really help. When you being bamboozled from the landlord at Sorrela Vining and they tell you to turn your keys in and leave and there is nothing else for them to do to your unit and you've been there for eight years and when you do leave, thinking you going to another home and find out you scam and they got nothing. So me, I've been living from here to there, hotel rooms, been bedbugs until one of my church member got tired of it and she asked me and my husband would we move in with her. So that's why I can, I can stand up. At first, I would cry, but I see no need to cry. But I know it's somebody out there can help, you know? I ain't asking for a lot, but I know that somebody can help. And I just ask God to give me the strength daily in this walk. And I thank you for the time and I thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen.
After Michelle Bradley is Monica Delancy, so she can be.
Good evening, everybody. I am also a tenant in the community that she is speaking of. I am a two-time Georgia transplant from New York. And I'm gonna, first of all, take accountability for my, for me not going due diligence as to where I moved. I had to find an apartment from New York. I was in a time crunch and I accepted the apartment that I now live in. But it has literally been a nightmare from the time that I've gotten there. But more so, I come in peace, I come in encouragement to my other neighbors, and I want you guys to all know that we must lean on God first off and that you are not the situation that you are in. You have to know. I'm a woman of purpose. So I am here today because first of all, I'm not going to settle for what we're going through, so I'm on my way out. But even if me being here and voicing helped someone behind me, then I've done and accomplished the mission. I do believe that everything that we go through is not a coincidence. Everything happens for a reason. I am not upset about being where I am, but I'm not comfortable where I am. I am a chef and a caterer and I have leaks in my home that prevents me from being the entrepreneur that I am. And those are the kind of things that upset me, but I don't let it stop me. So again, I'm here to encourage you guys to keep pushing, keep moving, know that you deserve better. Know that you deserve better and search for better. Don't settle. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Monica Delancy, District Two, Riverside Parkway, 595 Riverside Parkway, Silver Creek Crossing Apartments, eighteen years on Riverside Drive, Riverside Parkway, known as Silver Six Flags Drive. I'd like to thank Mr. William Tate, Councilman Ron Davis, Councilwoman Aladapo, Councilwoman Up for attending National Night Against Crime event on Sunday. We held it at Premier Learning Academy, now Cromer Academy. But it was so nice to hear and see you guys at the event. Also, some residents that's here attended the event, so thank you for attending, and also our community partners. But I do want to speak about some issues, early issues that's going on Riverside Parkway. The ladies that spoke, they're speaking about Silver Creek Crossing Apartments, 575 Apartments, as well as residents of Riverside Apartments, which are all owned and managed, I'm sorry, the bank owns it now, but managed by the same company. And Ms. Angela spoke about C.L. Avini's Apartments. What's going on is that Mableton have a high number of apartment complexes that are over forty years of age, and they're deteriorating. They're falling down. And yes, the county knew of these issues, and now, Mableton, you take the good, you take the bad, and that's what we have, okay? We embracing that. But let me speak of some of the funding that's coming through these apartments. You have the Section Eight vouchers that's coming through these apartments, that's federal funds. You also have rapid rehousing funds coming through these apartments. In addition, COVID funds came through these apartments. So it's no excuse for people to sit there with leaking roofs, unkept grass, mold, and being told that, and like Ms. Angela stated, that her apartment, C.L. Avini's Apartments, which is off of Hillcrest, told her that they were tired of fixing her units and then gave her a buyout. At the time, she thought it was easy, it was going to be easy for her to get another unit, but it was, it's not. So yes, now that we have these issues, Mableton, we have to stop playing with it. You're gonna have to pull up your sleeves and get in the trenches with us. We should not be here going back and forth to the county, back and forth to the state, begging and pleading. Just like you had everything else on this agenda, I want housing on the agenda. We make no mistake about it, and that's what we demand. If we care anything about our children, that's what we're doing. We thrive on Riverside. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Delancy.
Denise Woods. And following Denise Woods is Denny Wilson.
Yes. My name is Denise Woods, and I live in the 575 Riverside Apartments. I've been dealing with raccoons between my roof and the ceiling. It's been documented. It was on the news. I've been told I can either move to another unit, which they have yet to find, or I can leave. I am disabled raising my granddaughter. Where am I supposed to go? How am I supposed to do this? On disability. I've been told code enforcement. I've called code enforcement. I've been dealing with this since February tenth of 2023. Nothing is being done. The buck is being passed from this person to that person. Now we're the town of Mableton. What does that mean to me? It means absolutely nothing because nothing is being done. This is affecting me physically and mentally. I don't deserve this. I pay my rent. I do what I'm supposed to do, and this is the thanks that I get. I get told basically, you're not worth anything. You're nothing. And that's exactly how I feel. I believe I voted for some of you guys up here. I got to the polls. I made my son go to the polls. I dragged friends to the polls because you said you were about something. What are you about? Because we're not seeing it. So did I make a huge mistake in voting for you? When are we going to see something from this panel that's up here? When? When are our voices actually going to be heard and something be done about it? I moved from New York to come here to give my grandchild a better life. My child is going through stuff too because of what's going on in this apartment. We're now in August. They told me April first, oh, we'll have something for you. I get lip service. Oh, we can't find your email. We try to email you. It's nonsense.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
After Ms. Wilson is Bahia Graham.
Okay. Denny Wilson, District Two. You know, I've lived in this, in this area for forty-plus years. I raised my children here, my two sons. My younger, my, both my boys went to Riverside Elementary, which is still standing. They went to Lindley Middle School when Lindley was back in the woods, even before it was moved out to Veterans Memorial. And they both graduated from Pebblebrook High School. So I've seen this area at its best, and I've seen this area at its worst. But what I will not do is allow people to come in here and beat this council down. To the young lady that said Lisa Cupid told you that she did everything that she could, she lied to you. Because Lisa Cupid did nothing. I mean, when Mike Bois was chairman in from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, and some of you in this room know this to be true. Mike Bois came down to those apartments. He brought code enforcement, he brought the police, he brought all of the county officials down to this area, and he made those apartments get into, into good standing with code, with code enforcement. Lisa Cupid told Mike Bois to stay out of her district. So he got most of what he could get done, but I think when he finished, there were maybe about thirty-five, forty violations that were still outstanding. I mean, this problem that you guys are coming in here and talking about, it wasn't created in a, in a night, and it's not going to be solved in a night. Mableton has been a city every bit of two years. This, this council had to build this city up without a transition team. And I was against the city of Mableton, and all of you guys know it. But I stand with you now because this is my home, and this is where I plan to remain as my home. So give them some slack in what they've done. I mean, give them a little bit of slack. I mean, change will come. May not be the change you want, may not be the change you want to see, but change is gonna come. And I think this council is in an ideal position to do it, but you just got to give them time. I mean, and I think if you do that, then you'll be satisfied, some will be, some won't, with the results they will get. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bahia. I have been a resident of Cobb County now about fifteen years, believe it or not. I do, I am older than a lot, what I look like. I'm a mother of seven, have raised my children here as well. I'm originally from New Jersey. Just like Ms. Wilson, I left home to make a better home to raise my seven beautiful children and my now three grandchildren. I also reside in 575. I refuse to say I have no voice. I have a voice. Because I put my money, my tax dollars. I'm also on disability. I'm partially disabled, and I have no choice but to work because disability is not going to pay enough for me to be able to afford to provide for my family. But the problem is, where I lived wasn't on the outside as horrible as it looks now. I'm from an inner city, a real inner city. And what that looks like is the slums. It doesn't look like an inner city. What can be done? Y'all can make it happen because we elected y'all to be in these places. So it can be done. Anytime we have to hear that you are voting on a liquor store, anytime we have to hear, and there's nothing wrong with entrepreneurship because I believe in it. But how can you compare putting thousands upon thousands of dollars into a liquor store when you have three apartments, two next door to each other, one across the street, where the grass is so high that just in my apartment alone, I have seen snakes outside of my apartment. That roaches are coming in and out of my apartment. I never had that until those leaks started. They're so bad that they're even in my appliances. I feel horrible attempting to cook for my children. My refrigerator, roaches, gnats. Would you live like that? Would you? This whole beautiful panel up here. Would you come to 575 Riverside and live in 1003 Calgary Glen like I'm having to? I have an autistic child who stands seventeen years old and goes to Pebblebrook High School as well. Their environment affects them mentally, physically, and emotionally. Mold in the apartment from leaks that you are now starting to see. I was in the newspaper. I've written all officials. I, I have a voice. If I got to be the Harriet Tubman of these children, oh, with all God's grace, I am. Because I'll be, excuse my French, D-A-M-N, that my children of this county is going to suffer what they do.
Excuse me, ma'am. Time is up.
Thank you, ma'am.
The last card is J.C. Bang. Her bangs, bang.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hello to the mayor and all the council members and everyone here today. I wanted to speak on behalf of the business owners and potential business owners. I came in earlier today, and I listened to a lot of different policy and procedures, different boards that you guys are working diligently to get together. I just wanted to make a note that before decisions are made on liquor, beer, wine, or any other businesses, that a board is properly formed and everything is verified and authenticated. Initially, when the first, the First Amendment of a stipulation, I was in the back on time. I raised my hand. No one looked up in opposition. I was here on time. So I want to make sure that, that when everyone is speaking, that we're scanning and looking into the room also because we're people too, because I felt left behind. What I wanted to say is that there, there was a liquor store that Cobb County had approved to be open. And what happened was with that particular liquor store, they shouldn't have approved it to be open. They noted that, so they put a special stipulation that no other liquor store could be open. And what happened is that today, an amendment was approved for someone to apply, which is not a problem. You want, you want the city to grow in every different types of ways. But we want to make sure that we're, we have the board and the policy and procedures in place before we start approving or looking at things to know exactly what's going on. Because you have liquor stores and other businesses where there's churches, there, there may be a school. So we just want to make sure before things are being approved that every voice is being heard and that we have a board so that we know how to approve those licenses. We should not be making approval to amended stipulations when we don't have a liquor board ourselves or a policy and procedure ourselves. We need to get that in place first. See, we have to get our house in order before we can get any other house in order. And that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
No other cards.
Thank you, ma'am. At this point in time, we're going to conclude our public comment section and move on to Section Ten, which is our consent agenda. Council, we have two items on the consent agenda. The first is a resolution to allow the mayor to sign a stormwater maintenance agreement for the Leaning View subdivision. And the second is approval of the July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes. At this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Yes, please, ma'am.
Item ten A is actually not a resolution. It's just a stormwater maintenance agreement. So the request would be to approve the consent agenda subject to the approval reflecting that it's not a resolution, but in, but in agreement.
Yeah. I, I took the word resolution off late this afternoon, so your copy may still say resolution, but it's just improvement of agreement.
Understood. So this is just a stormwater maintenance agreement?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you. All right. So, Council, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with, actually, it's already been taken off, but it's just like this on our paper, right?
Yes, some of your papers may have resolution.
All right.
We had already printed.
Okay. Fair enough.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written. Do I need to say?
No.
Okay.
If you want to.
Well, as reflected in the online agenda.
I'd like to approve the consent agenda as written online.
I second.
Thank you. Motion was being properly seconded. Any further discussion, council?
Can you give a brief, just very quick summary of a stormwater maintenance agreement?
Yes, is Tina? Bill, is Tina?
No.
Okay. Well, this was collaborated, collaborated with, with Cobb County and our Community Development Department, just as part of the contract that we have with Cobb County to provide stormwater and related services. I did vet the agreement, but it's basically, you will see tons of these come through. It's basically where they commit to just providing notice, providing proper stormwater mechanisms for developments. It notifies them that they'll have responsibility for detention ponds, et cetera. So you'll start to see these in bulk as, as time goes by. It's a, it's a standard template.
Any other discussion, councilwoman?
Can you say the last part? You said that they don't have responsibility or we don't have responsibility for the detention?
You do not have it. It's, it's the responsibility of the, of the developer and the development.
Oh, okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and call the question. All who are in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All opposed, say nay. There are no opposition. The ayes have it. Thank you. We'll move forward to unfinished business. We don't, we, we do have item 12, which I know we've had quite a few people leave, but we still have a good amount of business that there is needed to be taken care of this evening. With that being said, let's move to item 12, which is our new business. We have three items. 12A is a presentation in consideration of a services agreement between the city of Mableton and Trees Atlanta for tree planting services. We're gonna have our sustainability, waste, and beautification director, Emily Groth, come up. This is something that we've been working on for quite some time, actually, before Emily even started. We had reached out to Trees Atlanta for cooperation within, understanding that sustainability and environmental stewardship is important to us. Was fortunate enough to have Director Groth come in, kind of take the load off of me, and kind of shifted that on to, to her now to, to run with. So the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, mayor and council. This is an exciting program. I'm excited to present to you. I'll briefly go through it, and there is a two-minute video in the presentation too, which hopefully that works for us. I'll go over what, who Trees Atlanta is. The program we're specifically talking about is the front yard tree program, what the financial impacts look like, and next steps if approved. So Trees Atlanta, you may have heard of them, is a nonprofit group that operates out of the city of Atlanta that aims to protect and improve the Atlanta area's urban forest. They don't just work in the city of Atlanta, but that is where they're based out of. They are experts in planting, conservation, education, and advocacy. And so far, they've planted over 170,000 trees. So the front yard tree program is in partnership with local municipalities. On the right, you'll see a lot of familiar cities that are a part of this program, Brookhaven, Shambly, Smyrna, our neighbors. In this program, it's broken down through three parties. Trees Atlanta would provide assistance with tree selection, delivery and installation of trees, and care and maintenance information. The city of Mableton would provide funding and promotion of the program, and the homeowner would provide ongoing care and maintenance after installation. And in general, this is a program where residents can sign up through Trees Atlanta to get a tree planted in their front yard. So.
We have planted more than 100 trees within the city of Shambly. We work at a host of various municipalities throughout the city of Atlanta and greater Atlanta area, and we basically will come up with a contract where we have opportunity to plant a certain amount of trees in a given season from October to March. As a city of Shambly resident, as long as you're a homeowner and a resident here, you can go online to our Trees Atlanta website, specifically treesatlanta.org/yardtree, where you can submit a request to obtain up to two, three trees in a given season. We offer a variety of predominantly native species, so a variety of oaks, so willow oak, white oak, overcup oak, schumard oak. We also typically offer tulip poplar, sycamore, and bald cypress. From a mid-story standpoint, we offer liverbirch, tupelo black gum, and people have, yeah, red maple available as well. So those are some options there, a lot of different options in terms of color. People like to have a variety to choose from. And we'll have our staff go out, we'll coordinate with you in advance to let you know when we will be coming. It's not a requirement for the homeowner to be present while the trees are being planted, but if they wish to be present, they're more than willing to be able to stay there and watch the process. And then, once we plant the tree, you will receive a file, a document, that contains basic tree care tips on how you can maintain your trees and ensure those trees have longevity and a prosperous future.
So this was a video that they made specifically for the city of Shambly. If you caught, he said that residents are eligible for two trees. That's something that is specifically worked out between each city agreement. So right now, this would be a pilot project where it would be one tree per resident just to gain utilization and interest in a program. There are 15 gowin container trees, similar to the trees that you saw planted in the video, about four to six feet tall, and they would be only planted during the planting season, October through March. And right now, in this pilot program, we're proposing 30 trees per one, for each resident be available. So the financial impact would be a $10,000 maximum contract price. So this would be if we offload all 30 trees to every interested resident. It's priced at $325 per tree, and that includes the tree installation and all the oversight and expertise. And it would be coming from the Tree and Beautification Fund that was approved relatively recently through the city budgeting process. Next steps would be consideration and approval of the agreement. Our heavy lift would be marketing and promotion of the program so we can garner interest and gauge utilization. And then, from there, we would help and assist with resident signups, and Trees Atlanta would be an informative partner that we would need for this program. And I'll take any questions.
I have a question. How do you determine who gets? I know there are only 30 trees, but how do you determine who gets? Is it first come, first served, or?
So if you go on the Trees Atlanta website, they do have an active list of trees that are available, and that's something that Trees Atlanta staff can help you with, whether you do want seasonal color, depending on where you're planting it, if it is a shade tree or needs full sun. So that's something that, once you sign up, you'll kind of get that consultation from Trees Atlanta, but they're native trees and good, good landscaping trees as well.
Okay, no fruit trees, no peach.
No Bradford pears, no.
They, they will, they will help ensure that you get the kind of tree that you want, but also that meets your need. And then, there is also a component where if the tree unfortunately does not make it, there's a, there's a guarantee program and there's a replacement program that goes along with it.
Yeah, there's, there's some replacement stipulations if it's not, you know, like an active god or something, yeah. If it's failure on part of the installation, that we can consider a replacement tree as
Anything else, councilman? I'm, I'm happy about this program. Happy to see us again. We've been trying to get this on for, literally, since we became a city. So thank you for coming on and kind of spearheading and moving this forward to hopefully take this to fruition with some additional trees in the city.
Thank you.
With this here, as consideration of this agreement, I know that there's a, a contract that has been moving forward. Madam Attorney, you've, you've had an opportunity to view that and review it correct.
Yes, I have. It's a beautiful program, beautiful contract. I did revise it, though.
Okay. Wonderful. Is this consideration we're gonna take to approve this now?
Yeah, the recommendation.
Yeah. Council, given the, the, all the work that's kind of gone in this, the ability for this to be able to move our city forward, the work that Director Groth has put in along with the presentation, at this point in time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this agreement between the city of Mableton and Trees Atlanta for tree planting services.
I'll make a motion to approve an agreement with the city of Mableton and Trees Atlanta for a tree planting program.
I second.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded by Councilwoman Jeff Coet. I'll go ahead and call the question if there's no discussion. All who are in favor of approve in the services agreement between the city of Mableton and Trees Atlanta for tree planting services, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. There are no opposition. The ayes have it. Thank you, Director Groth, again. Next item is 12B, which is consideration approval of resolution for the city of Mableton to amend the purchasing card policy. We had previously approved the policy. Since we've got Director Ellis on board, there has been some, I will say substantial updates, quite a few updates have been made to the policy. But I'll let you have the floor, Director Ellis, on this matter.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm gonna go briefly while I'm waiting for the, the item to come. There it is. This policy was adopted by mayor and city council on August 28 of last year with Resolution 2024-08-01. This is instituting the initial P-card policy. It doesn't define how cards should be requested issues, more like general housekeeping. So although the policy in whole has not changed, it's very stable. We provided more detail on the processes and the guidelines. And before I get further into the policy, I'm gonna go through certain areas so that you know the difference between what you've already approved versus what you have in front of you for approval tonight. The primary focus, the formal policy structure that referenced before, now we have more procedural and instructional. The P-card policy that you approved obviously was for a city still in the transition phase. You needed some leeway to be able to utilize the card to get city business done. Now, we're kind of string, ringing things in so that the city is following compliance and audit reviews, and we're, we're not gonna have any issues when it comes to an annual audit. Policy and scope, again, most of the things that you had were very brief and summarized. Now, we're having broader definitions outlining the objectives for not only the cardholder, but the city itself, and what the expectations are through the finance department. Administrative oversight, we had simple references to purchasing and finance director for what the responsibilities are. Now, we have specific roles and what the expectations that we need to do to assist the city to make sure that everything is in compliance. The training requirements, it mentions training only in general terms. Now, we explicitly provide the training that's gonna be there, and we also have forms that people sign to ensure that the agreement, and they acknowledge the policies that they are adhering to. Cardholder rules, again, a very brief, general summaries. Now, we have an extensive section on the responsibilities, including how to reconcile the documentation that's required and any prohibited uses of the card. Spending limits were very general in nature. Now, we have defined dollar amounts. This will align with the policies that I'll be bringing forth probably in the next few meetings. We're gonna be having purchasing policy coming in front of you, travel and meal policy, grants management, and a lot of those will align with these thresholds that we've created. Also, with cardholder limits, it was more concise and general in nature. Now, we've got, again, more extensive sections to give you explicit things on allowable and prohibitive purchases with the P-card. Reconciliation, it's mentioned that it's just required. It doesn't have a lot of process detail. Now, we give you an outline. It really holds your hand and helps you reconcile and follow along, make sure that everything is, is properly filed. Violations and enforcement, it just mentions briefly about disciplinary action without the actual detail. Now, we have a section and that the, that the cardholder actually signs as to what different violations occur, depending on the type of infraction that you, you perform. Again, mostly forms and documentations. We did not have those before. We've now created good forms for everybody so that they are aware of how to use the card. If there's exceptions and waivers that are needed, there's also allowance for that. So that's kind of this first slide. This is an overview, training and cardholder accountability. We're just, again, missing specific requirements for the cardholder training. Now, we have a more explicit training program. Reconciliation and audit controls, there aren't detailed instructions. Now, we're going into more detail showing what the reconciliation process is, making sure that people report and document properly so that city manager can approve and finance can absorb it, and your financials are accurate and timely, and all that information is included in the data that you will see in your financial statements. Prohibited actions, again, there are, there is a general list of prohibited uses here. We go a little bit further and provide more detail as to what some of those prohibitive transactions are. And as I mentioned, also, the enforcement of violations. There's forms, there's levels, so that that cardholder, when they take responsibility of that card, they know exactly what they are accepting responsibility for. And these are just some, you'll see on the right side are some examples. This is one of the forms. This is your agreement form. When the cardholder agrees and is approved to receive a P-card, they sign this form which says you are alignment with all the policies, and you're making sure that you're following all the terms of this P-card policy. So if you have any other questions on that, I'll be glad to answer them.
Counsel, any specific questions? All right, I don't think we have any questions. Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Counsel, with that being said, I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve this resolution for the amendment of the P-card policy.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments to the P-card policy.
I second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing done, I'll go ahead and call the question. All who are in favor of approval of the resolution for the city of Mableton to amend the purchasing card policy, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Policy has thusforth been updated. All right, counsel, with item 13, which is other business and discussion, there was not any, anything listed on there. Mr. Manager, there's a potential, actually, I think there's an opportunity here in this discussion session to provide an update. I don't think we received an update on the work that has been done along Riverside Parkway with our code enforcement team. There's lots that's been discussed in, in the newspaper, but I, I do think it may be diligence. On Wednesday at the work session, we did not have a presentation from code enforcement. I, I do not want to put anybody on the spot. I think that's a bit unfair to ask to do so. But at the same time, I, I do think it'd be fair that, from a discussion standpoint, that there is some update given as to what's occurred.
I'll make a note, and you make sure we get it on the agenda for our presentation.
Thank you, sir. I do appreciate that. With that being said, counsel, Mr. Manager, do you have any comments for this evening? Oh, I marked that one off myself. I'm sorry, my apologies. We do have a significant one here. I'm sorry, I marked that off by mistake. It's the, the next item, which is 12C, which is consideration approval of the city of Mableton causing for the Six Flags Special Service District to be levied at the same amount prior to the cities, prior to the cities incorporation. The long and the short of this is there's a Six Flags Special Area Service District that had been put in place multiple years ago, 11 years ago, I think. Special Service District to cover a specific area in the Six Flags area where we are now. And as a city, we've decided to take that up. It is a, is net new to the city, but is not net new to the businesses that are in the Six Flags area because what we are doing through this SSD is utilizing the same exact boundaries and areas. We're utilizing the same exact mileage of before and the same structure of the SSD. The goal for this is to keep in place exactly what was in place before, so there's no disruption or no surprises to anybody that's been subject to this Special Service District tax levy. Madam Attorney, do you have anything else to add for this?
No, mayor, I believe you've covered it all.
Thank you, ma'am. With that being said, council, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the city of Mableton Six Flags Special Service District to be levied in the same amount as the prior cities incorporation.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the city of Mableton causing for the Six Flags Area SSD to be levied, levied at the same amount prior to the cities incorporation.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion's been made.
I second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis, for your second on this. Counsel, any discussion?
I have a really quick question. I was asked, based on our, our establishing a special services district, whether this particular district would be omitted. My assumption was yes, or, or they're gonna be, they'll be in it, so.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I'm sorry. So is the Six Flags Service District, is that also gonna be included as an addition? We're gonna be, are they gonna be included in?
We do the, the public safety one?
I got you. So, so a special service district can cover any, any area in which the, in this case, the council deems. So what will happen here is any So what will happen here is any special service district is separate and distinct in itself. So this special service district will exist and will continue to exist as a separate and distinct entity regardless of what we do with the Public Safety Special Service District.
Okay, so they're not going to be included again?
They will be.
They will be?
It'll overlap.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yes. If the Public Safety Special Service District is citywide, this will also be in there as well. You can nest, or shall we say stack, special service districts. So you can, you can be in an area where you are part and parcel to multiple special service districts, not unlike we are in the city of Mableton and also in the county. So jurisdictions can overlap, but they can also be within each other. Any other discussion, counsel? Hearing nonchalant call the question, others in favor of approval of the city of Mableton causing for the Six Flags Area Special Service District to be levered at the same amount prior to the cities incorporation, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Do not have any opposition to that. Madam Clerk, please note that this has passed, thank you. With that, counsel, that was the last item of new business for this evening. I've addressed in other business and discussion about the potential update in a further meeting for the, what we're doing around housing specifically as relates to the Six Flags entertainment, oh, I'm sorry, relates to the Riverside Corridor. And we'll now move to item 14, which is city manager comments.
No comments, Mayor. I would ask that we be able to go on an executive session for the purpose of real estate.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, any comments this evening?
Well, just a main announcement that next week is qualifying for anyone interested in running for districts two, four, and six. And it will happen on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, 8:30 to 4:30. Cobb County will be doing the qualifying. I won't have anything to do with it except see it, but we will be placing the names on the door and on the website as people qualify each day. And the fee for qualifying for those districts is $600. And they will close around the lunch hour, I think it's 12:30 to 1:30. They go to lunch, but other than that, you can come in and qualify.
Can you give the location?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. It's at our administrative offices at 1245 Veterans Memorial Highway, which is in the Hawthorne Plaza. And we're Suite 20, right next door to the Dollar Store or the Family Dollar, whatever it is. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Attorney, any comments?
I'm, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Davis?
Yes, briefly, I want to welcome our new human resources director, Ms. Pope. Looking forward to working with you. Couple of things to just, as I sit here today, I was listening to the public comments. And I have said this before and I'll still say it in terms of, we are a new city. I do, again, remember when I lived in an apartment, I remember going to school, working, making ends meet and sometimes not having enough month, all that. And I know that it's tough. 20 years ago, you could not have told me that people would be paying the kind of rents now they're paying in Mableton. You could not have told me that, but they are. And wages haven't gone up, so that's a terrible place to be. But I will say this, it is, and I'm not, by no means making excuses or anything, but you know, the city of Mableton was established just two years ago. What cannot happen, will not happen, would never happen is that the city of Mableton will be an instant panacea for the problems within the community, within this, within this area. But we are working on it, we are working diligently on it. We've got some great people. And I would, I would rather not be working with anybody else to help this city go along. It really is, has been a heavy lift. As Ms. Wilson said before, we did this without a transition team. We did it and have come a long way. We've got a long way to go, we really do, but I'm confident that we have the people in place to do it with. So I'm optimistic. I will stay optimistic. Until the Lord calls me home in some way before my term is up, I'll stay optimistic. But I will say have, have, have some faith, have some patience, and we'll get the job done, but it does take time. It does take time. So thank you all for coming this evening and be safe out there. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman O'Donnell, you recognized?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight. I absolutely echo what Councilman Davis said because a lot of the apartments that we're talking about, that was talked about tonight, is between my district and his. And I just want to add that I've visited this apartment complexes a few times and I've spoken with the property management company to understand how we can help support because our priority as, you know, with the mayor and the council is that the living condition that our residents live in is one where I can live with my children. And that's a very important thing for me. I've lived in one of those apartments and I know, when they talk, I understand what they're talking about. And that's why I went over there to talk to the apartment complexes and just understand what the issue was. A lot of the issue were, you know, we're not, you know, residents are delinquent, residents are not doing this or that, they're not reporting on time. When they report, we want to reach out to them, we're unable to reach them, so so many excuses. But I did make sure that we engaged our code enforcement team once they were set up. I work, I mean, I'm on the phone with Director Farrell every week, getting an update on what's happening with these apartments. I'm sure he's tired of me at this point. One thing that we know is that these apartments get sold and bought all the time. And at some point, there was no, I mean, it was in receivership with no owner. And it got to a point where it was just absolutely, you know, terrible, which we understand. And now that they have a new property management company, we are meeting with them on a weekly basis and getting updates on all of the activities that is going on there to bring those apartment complexes up to code. A lot of you have heard about the raccoon problem. As of last week, they're working on sealing that entire building to sanitize it, to clean it up, and make sure that the raccoon infestation is taken care of. And the resident that was in that unit, they've worked with her to secure another, another, another unit for her. And they even offered for her to be brought, I mean, to leave if she wanted to with no penalty, she could get out of her lease if she wanted to. So they're also working with us to ensure that our residents feel cared for and the property feels taken care of landscaping. They just hired a landscaping company, they're working on paying them so the grasses can be cut and there will be no more snake issues. We're aware of all of these issues is what I'm trying to say, and we're working on making sure that they are addressed and those apartment complexes are up to code. The buildings that are not habitable have been boarded up. I have a lot, a long list of updates that I've gotten that I can share, but I just want to acknowledge those who came out to talk tonight, if they're online and listening because I know most of them are not here. We hear them and we are making sure that our team is on top of things and ensuring that residents have a better place to live than the conditions that is currently being reported and that we're hearing of during this meeting. I know the mayor said we'll have a more, a more put together update to share in our next meeting and I'm looking forward to that, but I think it's high time we start to talk about what we're doing about this apartment complexes because a lot of what we're doing in the background is not getting out. And that's why we keep getting, you know, people talking in the, in the public comment section, what are you guys doing, what's happening? We are actually working and we'll start to talk, the talk about what we're doing. That's all I have. Oh, and welcome to the team. We are so happy to have you and your expertise and I look forward to working with you. Ms. Pope, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jeffcoat?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out today. It's great to see, see all of you all. First, I do want to congratulate Ms. Pope. Thank you so much for wanting to be a part of this amazing journey. You're going to be a part of a great team. It's an all-star team, great leadership. So we just appreciate you wanting to come and join us and bring your expertise and your experience to help us out. And I'm looking forward to all the policies, all the procedures, all the processes that we are going to have in building this HR team and HR department. So thank you so much. I do want to say that I share the same sentiments as my colleagues up here as it relates to some of the concerns with the housing issues and apartment issues in District One and District Two. And it's disheartening to hear then when they, you know, they come up and they talk and share what their experience has been and their living conditions have been, you know, just deplorable. So I'm looking forward to, you know, continuing the small wins and the call to action to make sure that there's a strategic plan in place for us to be able to address these issues. There are children that are living in these apartments and no one would want to live under those conditions. So we as a city, I think we stand unified in wanting to provide support, finding the proper partnership and building programs and initiatives that'll be able to support and whatever that looks like. I know we still need to nuance it out and figure out, you know, in detail and being able to work with code enforcement directors and all the other partners as well as the council members up here. And so I just, I look forward to the day when we can put that strategic plan in place and get some of these housing issues resolved as it relates to the renters that live here in the city of Mableton. I do want to say that I had the honor of attending a book bash, a bookbag bash with Pure Hope Church. I was able to partner with them. We were able to distribute over 350 bookbags. And we, you know, we weren't able to, to give out or assist, some folks didn't, weren't able to get bookbags, but I do have an additional 100 bookbags that I'm able to give out. So if you know of any schoolchildren that need bookbags, need school supplies, please certainly reach out to me. You can find my contact information on mableton.gov. And then lastly, I do want to acknowledge and wish all of the students and teachers, they went back to school last week and I just hope that they have a successful year. I know that, you know, it's hard being an educator. They put in a lot of sweat equity and we really appreciate them. And I just hope that I have two elementary schools and Pebblebrook High School in my district as well as some early learning schools. So just want to wish everyone a safe and, and successful school year. And that's all I have. You all have a good night.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Ogg?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome, Ms. Pope, welcome aboard. So this weekend, or past last weekend, Mableton had a team for a very big bike ride. It was a huge success. The weather was absolutely perfect. I'm still kind of pumped up about it. It was really great and it was, it was better than I imagined. It was in celebration of the Silver Comet Extension, which is the future of connecting Mableton to the Atlanta Belt Line. And so I hope to have more bike rides in the future, perhaps on some of the multi-use trails that also exist in Mableton that maybe people haven't got to explore yet. Also, want to encourage you to utilize the front yard tree program that Mableton will be implementing. Thank you, Ms. Gross, for your work on that. I think that's something many people have mentioned is wanting a better tree canopy and a greener, cleaner Mableton. And this is one step that you can be a part of that and invest in the future of Mableton with a tree in your front yard. And the last thing I want to ask is we established alcohol review board today with our ordinance. And so I, I know I need someone to fill it, so please send me an email at patricia.alc@mableton.gov if you have business or law enforcement or responsible alcohol consumption experience to fill that board. So thank you all very much.
Councilwoman Herndon?
Good evening to everyone, including our online people that are tuned in to, you know, check the meeting out tonight. I wanted to personally congratulate our new human resources director. Welcome to the city of Mableton, yes. And most of my council members have already, you know, covered a lot of the things that I was thinking about, so I'm glad that several of them addressed, you know, the public comment tonight. You know, it's distressing to hear those type of stories, but you know, trust, trust us that we're on the job and hope to get some resolution in that, you know, in the, in the coming, you know, whatever period of time is necessary to get a lot of those things resolved. I have a need for some appointees. We have a veterans board that's going to be stood up, you know, so if you're in District Six and you'd like to volunteer, you know, some of your time, please also reach out to me at deborah.herndon@mableton.gov. And I've put a list of other appointees that I need to fill on my website and also on my Facebook page, but if you just give me a call, I'll let you all know what they are, you know, because we do need some volunteers for some very important boards and commissions. So please reach out to me and that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I would just like to start off by saying that Councilman Ferguson sends his regrets for not being able to be here this evening and especially for not being able to leave comments this evening. He is watching though, so, hi, Councilman Ferguson. As you guys know, this council is a working council, not just the work that we do here, but we all have other jobs outside of this. So there are times where we work to coordinate schedules as much as possible, but as this past week has shown us, it's, it can be tough and challenging to ensure that we can both balance our, our full-time jobs along with the second full-time job of being, serving on this council. So I'd like to thank Councilman Ferguson for tuning in even though he couldn't be here. I, you know, I want to echo some of what our council people have already, have already said. And there's so much work that goes into what we do on a daily and weekly basis that does not necessarily always get seen. I think part of that is a function of us growing as a city. I know myself, I have the habit of putting my head down and just working and just getting the work done. And I do understand that that sometimes can be a challenge for folks that don't necessarily always see it. It may be covered in the news sometimes. If someone reaches out via email, we always do the best of job to make sure that information, the correct information, the accurate information is getting out. We do have to do a better job at that. And Councilwoman O'Donnell, I do agree with your sentiment along with that. There's a tremendous amount of work being done, a lot of work that's being done specifically on the Riverside Corridor, but it's a delicate situation. You know, it didn't just start, we just took over code enforcement in March of this year. The area's been challenged for a long, long time. But you know, there's, the question that was asked, have you ever lived somewhere like that? I know Councilman Davis had made reference to it. I know I have. You know, I lived in a, in a place that was infamously called Creek Bend in Greensboro, North Carolina. You know, crack was regularly sold outside the front door. I don't ever remember the grass being moved in that apartment complex. On far too many occasions, I came out to find a window being busted because my Best Buy radio had been stolen yet again. Most of the time, police didn't bother to show up. I stayed there because that's all I could afford. You know, I worked at nights while I was in school, loading trucks on the dock. And that amount of money paid for the apartment. I know what it's like. I understand the challenges that they're facing. Many of us have walked that same path. You know, I've been recently to those apartments. I can tell you this, it's not a lack of understanding or empathy or understanding living in challenging situations. It's more of a situation that this city has inherited a mess. And a mess that now is on our watch that we got to clean up and we will clean it up. I've said before, I've made no bones about it, we will not tolerate this. But we also know that once courts get involved and items go into receivership and legal gets a hold- courts get involved and, and items go into receivership and legal gets a hold of things, it can get tough sometimes. Sometimes it can get worse before it can get better. And I know no one wants to hear that. But that is the truth, and that is the fact. And any narrative that shines a light on the fact that we don't care, or we're just busy looking elsewhere, we could be bothered with something else, could not be any further from the truth. We do care. Many of us have walked those same lives, living in those same situations, and want to see nothing more than how we can help to uplift and improve certain parts of our city. And that, this is not just about Riverside Corridor as well. Let me, let me state that fact. There are, there are other council people here that have apartments in their districts. Apartments aren't just relegated to that area. Apartments that need to be uplifted aren't relegated to this, that area. This is a comprehensive issue that we have to look at. This is not just limited to Mableton, Georgia either, you guys. I've talked to mayors from across the country that are facing the same exact situation where they're stuck between revitalization and gentrification, right? An issue where we have housing that absolutely must get uplifted, but at the same time, when sometimes when that actually happens, the people who used to live there can no longer afford to live there. That is a balance we're going to have to take because the discussion that we're having right now is about how do we ensure that we fix dwellings that are substandard, and they are substandard. But I want to make sure that in six months, we're not having a discussion about how do we make sure that people who are currently living there can continue to afford to live there. So this is a, it's, on one hand, it's very simple. We will not accept substandard housing in the city. But on the other hand, we have to be cautious to make sure that we don't have revitalization that turns into gentrification, and the people that have enjoyed living here for so long no longer have an opportunity to do that, and they are pushed out. That is, there's a realistic fact that I want to make sure that we continue to discuss. Speaking of that area, I, I also had the opportunity to meet with the new operations manager at Six Flags. A great conversation, talking about how we can continue to partner with Six Flags, how they are willing, and for those who do not know, they did make it clear Six Flags over Georgia is not closing. I've heard that rumor time and time again. It's not closing. They do not have that in their plans, as was shared with me. On the contrary, what they would like to do is to partner with the city for more beautification efforts to ensure that the, this area is more befitting of a national amusement park such as Six Flags and Cedar Fair. They did just recently go through a merger with Cedar Fair, and it has changed quite a bit. So the new operations managers came in. And again, I was able to have a great conversation, but with her, about certain things that we can do in partnership that will be a benefit not only to the park or in the city, but also to the people who actually live here. I do want to make notice that we did pull the Special Service District for Public Safety from the agenda this evening. The reason we did so was very simple, is because I want to make sure that it is the absolute best, well-put-together piece of policy that we absolutely could do. And I don't think it's quite there yet. It's getting closer. We're also trying to do something that meets the needs of the people. We're being, creating it in an empathetic way to ensure that we're not overburdening anyone in particular. But the fact of the matter is that we're, we're going to put policy on, on the table that works for everybody. And if we need another week or two to be able to do so, then that we're going to take that. I was up literally until almost, I, I pulled an all-nighter working on some of this policy and making sure that we were looking at what other cities are doing, but quite frankly, just trying to be innovative and maybe doing some things that other cities have not done. And that's okay, too. That's currently with our city manager for review and with our attorney for review. Hopefully, I'll be able to share that with the council as soon as we make sure that we're not, that it's in line, right? We're looking at, at state code, we're looking at the Constitution. We're looking at case law to ensure that we can put this together in a way that, that truly benefits everybody. We do hope to get it back on the agenda very soon. But again, the goal is to have the best piece of policy possible. Lastly, I do want to say that this Veteran Affairs Commission is something that is near and dear to my heart. As an eight-year Marine Corps veteran, we have other veterans that are on our council as well. The goal is to have this Veteran Affairs Commission up before, in time for Veterans Day, is what I will say about that. So we do need to come together to make sure we have that. There is no other city in Cobb County that has a Veteran Affairs Commission. We will be the first. Hopefully, we won't be the last. I don't mind leading from the front. And this is one of those areas where we are going to lead and make sure that our veterans have a, a voice in the city as well, and that we're being respectful and cognizant of those who, whose shoulders we stand on and who have fought and served this country. I am extremely proud that we've got the Trees Atlanta Agreement in place. This is part of the EV 2035 initiative, and to see another piece kind of come together. Sign up for it. Take advantage of it. I, I hear quite often how, as, as a city, we seem not to be interested in protecting our, our trees and our forests. And again, I'm here to speak truth to fact. We absolutely do. And, and we, we set aside city funds, specifically in the budget for this effort. And now we will have an opportunity to ensure that we are living up to that commitment that we made to all of you guys. And with that being said, I just want to close out by saying thank you for continuing to speak up. And this is specifically to everyone that is watching online, but also everyone that is here and that were here earlier as well. You know, you come and say your piece, but I want to make sure that everyone has that opportunity, whether you're speaking in, in for or for some things that we are producing and trying to get across the line, or you're not happy with it and you want to speak in opposition. I also understand that sometimes you may speak for something on one issue, but speak not for something at the other hand as well. We are here to receive that, right? We don't speak during public comment because there isn't the quorum that we want to keep, and we want to keep things moving forward. But we listen, we hear, we're typing, we're writing. And many times, issues that are brought forward are items that we are already working on. I, I quite often hear items that aren't quite accurate. If you aren't sure about something, please feel free to reach out to me. You can go on the website and go to Officer the Mayor. There's a constituency button that is there to have your concerns. And every single day, I think my chief of staff, TJ Copeland, is still back there, we're working on constituent issues every single day. If you aren't sure about something, feel free to ask. And our city manager stays on the phone with constituents all the time. We've had every one of our council members that have said, if you have a question about something, here's my number, here's my email address. I would much rather you take the time to reach out to one of us to find out exactly what's going on. I understand in a vacuum, things get said. And there are forums online where, my goodness, I don't know where this information comes from, but someone puts it out there, right? And y'all know the adage, if it's on the internet, must be true. Well, that's not the case. So I, I say all that to say, to close this out by going, feel free to reach out to us, right? Constituency and what you guys care about is important to us. That is why we're here. That's the primary reason why we're here. Don't let, don't let rumor mills run today. Get the facts from members of your council, from myself. Go online, fill out a form, and I'll make sure that someone takes the time to meet you. If not me, myself, it'll be someone from our team, and we'll make sure you get the facts that you need. With that being said, thank you all for coming. I do appreciate it. Members of the council, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for real estate, personnel, and litigation.
I'd like to make a motion to go into the executive session for real estate, personnel, and litigation.
I second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded by Councilwoman Herndon. All those in favor of going to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Here are no opposition. We will retreat into executive session. Thank you to everyone that came today and has watched online. If you're not going to be here when we're back, please have safe travels and see you at our next meeting. Thank you.